Minnesick Valley Community, I just wanted to reach out real quick. I just am coming off of getting out of the Board of Education meeting that happened tonight. And then I had to run some errands, go grab some kids. And before I run inside, because once I run inside, it's gonna be busy. So I figured, I just wanted to give like a little intro to this meeting. And then, you know, I'm gonna upload it for you. Because we really gotta get ready for this vote, this budget vote that's happening on. Stay with me, May 20th, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Oh, 9:00 AM, 6:00, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It's been a long day. So anyway, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at two different locations. You have the Minnesick Intermediate School Gym A, I think it's called Gym A, pretty sure it is. But in that particular facility for some of our community. And the other part of our community has the polling facility at Otisville Elementary. So just find out where your designated poll spot is if you don't know. Because the first time I ever voted, I went to the wrong spot. And, you know, quickly went to the other spot, but, you know. Yeah, I wanna do that now. But anyways, so if you don't know where it is, just reach out and somebody at the, uh, the school will be able to tell you where you need to go. So anyway, uh, yeah, just coming off of the meeting. Uh, it, the first part of the meeting was, uh, going over the, the budget. Brief synopsis, I mean, a couple of minutes. But taking everything that was in the five, uh, finance meetings and breaking it down into a couple of minutes. That's kinda tough, but, uh, it gives you, it gives you all the numbers there, okay? But I highly, highly, highly recommend, if you have time, look at those other finance meetings, especially number five. Because there's a ton of facts and figures in there that, um, are, that, that had changed in the budget, budget, like they're trying to save money here, the move money. It's, it's a lot. I had to listen to it twice. And, uh, they go through the information really, really quickly. So if you have any questions, this is the time to inform yourself and ask any questions that you may have. I know, um, you know, you can always just, you could put it on, I, I listened to it when I was in the car. But, uh, you know, whatever, whenever you have a, you know, a couple, three minutes to just listen to the budget. It's, um, it's definitely helpful, especially when you go in on, when is it again? May 20th, right, to make that vote. Because, uh, an informed public is, is a strong public. And they're gonna make the right decisions once they have all the information. Uh, and let's see, so the first part of this particular meeting that happened tonight, uh, it was talking about the, um, the budget. And then there's, you know, some other, there were some procedural things. They, uh, voted and adopted a couple, like, oh, something on Title IX. And then there was, uh, something on, what's it, Title VI as well? Uh, if you want, you just go onto the agenda and it'll break it down, uh, for you, what they did vote on. Now, one thing that absolutely made me smile, like sometimes I laugh out loud because there's some silly things that happen in, in board meetings and whatnot. But, uh, this one actually genuinely made me smile was when, uh, Mr. Finton, Jeff Finton, was talking about Unified Sports. Now, if you don't know what Unified Sports, it's where intellectually challenged and non-challenged, uh, teammates come together on a team and compete. So he, he said that the first, uh, competition they had was this week. And it was a pretty close competition. It just absolutely makes my heart happy to hear that we are meeting these children where they are, intellectual disabilities and all, and we are offering something to them. It's just, I, oh, I love it, I love it. So there is another, uh, competition, uh, next Tuesday at four o'clock. And I believe he said it was at the, uh, the high school gym, if I'm not, uh, if I'm not mistaken. So if you have some time, I'm gonna try to, if, uh, if I have some time, uh, to get out there and just support this. Because this is fantastic. All right, this is community coming together and this, this, this is it. This is what we are designed to do. We are designed to come together and, um, just do things like this. So excited about that. And, uh, but, you know, just, I think the meeting's probably about, I'm gonna say about 35 minutes, 40 minutes, something like that. So if you get a chance, just, you know, put it on the background, listen to it. Because we really do need to get excited. If you're not excited, I'm excited. And sometimes when you have somebody excited, it gets you excited, okay, about this budget vote. And also you're voting for Board of Education members as well, there's three seats open. So make sure that you're doing, and their, their bios are gonna be coming out soon. And you know how I know that? You know how I know that? Cause I'm running. Did I, uh, oh, no, it's, it's not a secret. But no, I am, I, I am totally running. So if you guys have any questions for me, if you have any, uh, like words of encouragement, anything. Because like I say always, we are in this together, right? Always, 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 we are in this together and your voice matters. Your voice has so much power behind it, right? And I wanna make sure everybody knows that. I do. You... I don't think you guys understand how, like when I have to go, I had to go around and get petitions signed. A whole bunch of signatures signed. And every time I went and I talked to somebody and they were just almost thankful that they can have somebody to talk to, you know what I mean? They want their voices to be heard. And your voice, like every time I heard different stories, I'm like, this is, you guys are amazing. You guys are, you guys have your finger on the pulse and you're busy doing all your other things that we all have to do, right? Things I had to do after a board meeting, uh, you know, you're living your life. But you guys are so in tune on what's going on in our district. It's unbelievable, all right? So I, I am so fortunate that to every single one of you that I have talked to when I got my petition, petition signed. Because you energized me to be like, every, you guys are engaged. Everybody's engaged. It's, it's so cool to see it, you know? And we all work together. Every single one of us works together, you know? Me sitting and taking all these videos of the, the Board of Ed, that, that's my position right now, you know? And, and I'm happy to do it. And, um, wherever I am supposed to be come next year, I'm gonna do it, I, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it the best of my ability. Because our community is fantastic, okay? And I know that, I already know that. But when you go around and you talk to people, you see that even more. And you see the, the heart and the desire for this community, our, our district, to be the best it can be, you know? You guys are fantastic. So anyway, a little bit, a little bit more, uh, information that I thought I was gonna be giving right now. But anyway, I hope you guys have a great night. I try to, um, do as much research, like I said, on this budget as possible. So when you go into the, the ballot box, you're able to make the best decision that you absolutely can for yourself, for the district, for us just as a whole, as a community, okay? All right, totally excited. So if you're not excited yet, I'm gonna be excited for you, all right? Have a great night and I will see you at the next board meeting.
Welcome to the Minnesick Valley Board of Education, regular meeting for Thursday, April 24th, 2025. We do have a quorum, will everybody please rise in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We're going to ask the Board of Education for, uh, motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. It resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of April 24th, 2025.
So moved Anthony Monaco, second, Bill Cooper.
Motion made and second, is there any discussion? Being, being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. Motion carried. Welcome to the visitors portion of the meeting, is the next item on the agenda. We have one speaker, Ash, Ashley Riley.
You can come right up, Ashley, I don't think you need the microphone. Not a really large audience here, so.
I agree, do I need to be on film or is it right here?
You can do it wherever you want, Ashley.
All right, uh, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Ashley Riley, I've been a teacher here for seven, eight years. I started off at the high school level and then I went to the middle school for a period of time, a couple of years. And then I was able to get a place back at the high school. And at that time, I actually had such a good experience in the middle school and the high school that I had said to, um, my supervisor at the time that I, I would let her pick where the better spot was. So, uh, I'm introducing myself to you now because I had requested, uh, unpaid leave for next year. And I wanted just to introduce myself and put a face to, uh, what, what you'd be looking at and thinking over. And I, uh, I'm mainly interested in a couple of things. And one of them is to be a better teacher by, um, spending time and getting a physics certification in teaching, which I'm only sure a test on, so. But, uh, even so, I'd like to work on, uh, really thoroughly understanding what I have learned back from college about 20 years ago. So it's been a period of time, but I, I know that science teachers are, uh, in demand at times. And I've been working as a special ed math teacher and I love it, uh, but I've been doing it for about seven, eight years. And that's part of my request to you is to, um, consider investing in more teachers. And I also wanna say that I appreciate the support that I've been given as a teacher throughout the past seven years. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you very, very much. Next item on the agenda was the Superintendent report, Mr. Monaco.
Yes, uh, first item is our Minnesick Valley 2025-2026 budget. Uh, if you would like, if you can't see, come sit over here if you'd like, and I can talk this way. I'm gonna have Mr. Withrow kind of run the, run the, uh, thing for me here. Okay. So just some background for everybody. The budget process started, uh, last October, where we started working with our buildings and departments to gather all of the information, bring everything together, and then start working it under a review of Central Office. Once all of that was done, we then put that together and shared it with the Board and then gave you a bunch of weeks to start to look at all of the different pieces of the budget. And what you see tonight is our final process here, where we will vote tonight to adopt our budget. So all the months and months of work are culminated in what we have here tonight. Our 2025-2026 proposed budget is $123,533,205. This budget will preserve all current academic, co-curricular, athletic programs and opportunities. Best part of this budget, 100% tax cap compliant. We are below what our max tax cap limit is. That means we only require a simple majority vote to have this budget approved. So, let's talk about our tax levy. So our 2025-2026 proposed tax levy is $54,662,708. That levy represents about a $1.4 million increase over the previous year, okay? That means it's a 2.79% tax levy. But I think everybody needs to understand on the tax levy, the tax levy isn't what our community pays. That's the tax rate. The levy is just the money we have to raise. And I think that's important because we're gonna share with you a little bit later some historical information about where we stand as a district over the last 13 years. Our three-part budget comparison, we have program, administration, and capital. So if you see programs up, uh, a little over $4 million, okay? Always good to see our program expanding. Administration is up a bit, but what constitutes administration? It's everything associated with running the district, not just administrator. If you're asking a couple of things that contribute to that, as we shared with you through the budget process, one of the things that we've been an ardent supporter of is Orange Ulster Bosse's new capital project for expanding all the opportunities for kids. Well, the increase, this is our year for the jump year for that, for that hitting our budget. So after this, it'll level out at that point in time. But this is where we see that increase from the Orange Ulster Bosse's program, uh, from that capital project. That part is in their administrative budget, which is part of our administrative budget. Also, uh, you know, we have some other things that are going on too, as you might be aware. We've added a new waste treatment facility. As you saw in our insurance stuff, we increased our insurance, uh, contributions that we have to make because we're adding a new facility. So those are some of the things that affect the administrative budget. Obviously, capital, as you saw, capital is down. Why is capital down? Well, one of the things is, we have retired some debt. So our capital is down through, uh, some of the debt coming off. All right, moving on. So, foundation aid, good news for us. We experienced a good increase in foundation aid from, for the district, okay? Other districts were not as lucky as we were as, as we went through this. But where is the money being spent? As we always talk about, we are a labor-intensive business, okay? So employee benefits, ERS, TRS, that's the retirement system, health benefits, we're up about $2.1 million. Pupil Personnel Services, about $442,000, holding right around where we were last year. Debt Services, as we talked about, debt service has dropped. Transportation, as we shared with you, uh, we had bought 15 buses to catch ourselves up this previous year. Now we're at that point where we think we can return to more of a normal schedule for purchasing our buses, okay? And we'll go over the bus purchases a little bit later. So we're down in our transportation budget. And then obviously payroll, as I said, a labor-intensive business that we're in, payroll is up about $1.5 million. So let's talk about revenue, where does the revenue come from? So first, our property tax levy, $54 million, as I talked about. That's one of the areas, so we have an increase of about $1.4 million. State aid, we're receiving $55.6 million in state aid. That's up about $335,000. Fund balance reserves, we've added about $400,000 in the, in the fund balance reserves. Miscellaneous revenues, we're up almost a million dollars in that. One of the things that's really contributed to that for us is over the last few years, since Mr. Withrow has joined us, we have been investing in NILAF and NICLASS, where we're allowed to put some of our money into. That return has been very, very good for the district. So we've increased our returns again and what we estimate we're gonna make next year. Uh, this year, uh, we'll probably, we don't know the final numbers yet, because we still have a couple of months to go. But the previous year, we were up to about $1.7 million in interest that we've earned for the, for the district, which again, helps offset costs to our taxpayers. Finally, payment in lieu of taxes, we're up very slightly. What's our biggest pilot? Biggest pilot is obviously CPV. Then you have some smaller pilots and then you have our solar pilots that come in. So that's really what makes up our revenue for this year, $123 million. So let's talk tax levy and tax rate. The levy is the total amount of money that we have to create for the district and what we have for our taxpayers. The rate is the factor used to determine an individual's property tax bill. The levy and rate are different. An increase in the levy does not necessarily mean there's going to be an increase in the rate someone is going to pay. So what, what actually affects that? Well, that's where the equalization rate comes in. That's determined by the New York State Office of Real Property. We don't get those until probably end of May, beginning of June, into July, depending upon the town. So, the second thing that affects that is growth. As we always say, if the pie gets bigger, the slice that you have to contribute is smaller. So we've all experienced growth. I think we can all see driving around Minnesick, uh, Minnesick community, houses being built in different areas, businesses coming in, all of those things are great because what that does is help offset the taxes. So, in '23-'24 school year, we had a tax levy increase of 1.65%. Four out of the six municipalities had a negative tax increase. In other words, their taxes were reduced. Now jump ahead to '24-'25, our current year. Our tax levy was 2.31%. Again, four out of the six townships were negative. And the two that weren't negative, one went up, I believe, by .2%, the other one went up by .7%, not even a percentage point. So you can see over the last couple of years how we've done here. Typically, four out of the six townships have a negative tax number. Our levy this year will be 2.79%. We have an anticipation that we're gonna see similar results going forward. So some historical numbers for you here, as I said, the tax rate is what we actually have to determine your tax bill. So if you look, over the last, uh, 13 years, we've gone from $41 million to about $53 million in our tax levy, about a 29% increase. The average annual increase was 2.25% per year. However, this, over the same time period, the weighted average annual increase in the tax rates has been an average of .962. So if you look, Greenville, over 13 years, has averaged about .77%, okay? Not even a percentage point. Minnesick, the town of Minnesick, 1.19%. Mount Hope, .9%. Walk Hill, .45%. Way Weon, .94%. Mavakating is 2.06%. Why is that? We've talked about that over the last couple of years. They were negative, they were negative last year or this current year. But the previous years, if you remember, they had 10 and 12% increases. That was because of the equalization rate, okay? That's what affected them, had nothing to do with the district. It had everything to do with how the properties were being assessed. So what's the weighted average annual tax rate increase over the last 13 years? .962%. Very good work for us in the district here. So let's talk about the bus purchases. We're looking at 12 new school buses. Total purchase amount just above $2 million. Five large 72-passenger buses. We're also looking at two wheelchair buses that are 42 passengers. We have another, uh, uh, three wheelchair buses, 30 passengers. And then we're looking at two new minivans. Important note that we remind our community all the time, we receive 75% state aid on all of our transportation costs. So what does that mean for our bus purchases? Well, our total purchase is $2 million. We're estimated to receive a little over $1.5 million in aid on that bus, on those bus purchases, which means our net cost of transportation, with net cost, our estimated cost with net transportation aid for 12 new buses, we're looking at $515,000. But I also want everybody to remember too, at the end of that year, we also sell our buses, okay? And we use the government auction website now, which we've done very well on. We've gotten back $50,000, $60,000, $70,000. That helps offset this cost as well. So we do very, very well on our bus purchases. It is a great return on investment for our community. Take a look at the average cost of a bus, about $49,000. The minivans are $12,000. Good luck in going around and finding a minivan that you can buy for $12,000 brand new, okay? A 72-passenger bus at $49,000 is probably a little bit higher than what you'd pay for a regular car purchasing a car right now, okay? So again, this helps our community, it's a great return on investment. Our buses last anywhere from 10 to 12 years. I think it also depends upon how bad the winters are. That's typically what fails a bus, for everybody to know, it is the rust. That's what fails, the salt on the roads, no matter how much cleaning we do, salt is salt. We all experience it in our cars, that's what affects us. So again, just wanted to review that, 12 new buses, estimated state aid is approximately 75%, which means the net cost is about $515,000. The reason why we had purchased more buses over the last couple of years is remember, we've had some situations where in 1920, uh, and '23-'24 school years, we had failed bus propositions where we didn't purchase buses. And there were a couple of years during COVID where we didn't purchase them as well. So we've had to kind of catch up a little bit. And we believe we are where we need to be right now in order to return to our regular, uh, schedule of purchasing buses. Final thing, our budget vote date, May 20th, 2025. Polling locations, Otisville Elementary School, Minnesick Intermediate School, and that'll be in the gym. Otisville will be in the library, it worked out very well last year. And the polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And what we tell everybody is, please get out and vote. Questions from the Board of Education? Then I would just like to finish with, thank you to the work done by our Finance Committee, by our entire Board of Education, by our administrative team, Central Office team, faculty and staff, departments. A tremendous amount of work went into building this budget. I think it's important to note, you have a budget to budget of 2.65%. CPI right now is running over 3. You have a tax levy of 2.79, again, with CPI running at over 3%. We've done everything we can to make sure this was less than what CPI was. It's a lot of work by everybody and a good job by everybody, so thank you. No more questions or any questions? All right, we're done, thank you. Are we ready, Mr. Flaherty, I'll go on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, I have a motion for the approval of the proposed budget for '25-'26. Being resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation, Superintendent adopts the proposal, uh, the proposed '25-'26 budget in the amount of $123,533,205 that is presented for public vote on May 20th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved Patty Reynolds.
Second, Anthony Monaco. Motion made and second, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the Orange Ulster Bosse's Administrative Budget Resolution. That the Minnesick Valley Central School District Board of Education cast its vote to approve the Orange Ulster Bosse's '25-'26 Administrative Budget in the amount of $9,638,064 and that the district clerk is hereby authorized to execute the certification of such vote and transmit such certification to the Orange Ulster Bosse's District Clerk at 4 Harriman Drive, Gosha, New York, 10924, or charlene.depew@oubosse.org. Do I have a motion?
So moved Captain Rose.
I'll second.
There we go.
Motion made and second, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, motion to cast one vote for each Orange Ulster Bosse's candidate. William M. Boss, David Eaton, and Edwin A. Estrada. Do we have a motion?
So moved Bill Cooper.
Second, Scott Hines.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. Flaherty, there's only three people running for three seats, grab.
Correct. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
And a motion to accept the Chester Union Free School District's students for our trap team. Do I have a motion?
So moved Patty Reynolds.
Second, Anthony Monaco.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, being resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation, Superintendent approves Policy 7551, Title IX Sexual Discrimination Policy for Students for a Second Reading and Adoption. Do I have a motion?
So moved Scott Hines.
Second, Vanessa White.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, I have approval of machine operators. Being resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation, Superintendent approves Bonnie Urbansky, Lita White, Mary Jo Wagner, and Marina Kramer for training on the new voting machines on or about April 28th, 2025, as machine operators for the annual budget and election vote on May 20th, 2025. The district clerk is authorized to contact eligible persons as needed to assist with the vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved Patty Reynolds.
I'll second.
Got it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Uh, finally, the motion that I added, uh, that we had spoken, that our attorneys had recommended, being resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies its compliance with the provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 in its decision-making policies consistent with the United States Supreme Court precedent set forth in the case of Students for Fair Admissions Incorporated versus President and Fellows of Harvard. Being further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorized the Superintendent of Schools to execute whatever governmental certifications may be required. The signed certificate, certification should be date-stamped and maintained by the school district clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved Chris Lewis.
Second, Bill Cooper.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Can we just get a little clarification on what this is?
Can we just get a little clarification on what this is?
Yes, uh we had shared with you in your board report a couple of times, uh recommendations that uh the state had said that we didn't need to pass a motion like this because they felt we were in compliance with New York State. Your attorneys have sent two motions, uh second, two advisories. I'll send the second one, uh we just received on Monday, but I'll send that in the board report. This is to certify that we're following all the Title Six compliance uh requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
Mr. Flaherty, I'd like to amend the agenda if we could, um before we go into the uh human resources.
Sure.
Um I'd like to uh amend the agenda um for further discussion on on Section A of the Human Resources.
And we um.
And re- reserve the right to uh um uh make decisions after executive session.
Take action after executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. Mr. Giadina, we'll we we will continue with you now.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty, uh for proposed actions. We have a motion to approve the resignation and appointments as listed.
So moved Scott Hines.
Second Ruth Lewis.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you very much. Mr. Giadina, next item on the agenda is Mr. Renato with quick women instruction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Uh again, tonight I just want to take a few minutes to bring the board up to speed on uh some recent developments with where we are with the provision of AEDs or Automated External Defibrillators around the district, um specifically as it relates to a a pretty significant change that we've had with how we're managing some of this, so um this within the past year, New York State put new regulation in place that's not necessarily applicable to schools, but it is applicable to many of our partner organizations and the organizations that service many of our students, talking about youth leagues. Um essentially, the ru- the law that they put in place stated that youth leagues are now required to have AEDs in place at facilities where they're going to be um having you hosting athletic competitions. And so the the onus is really on those youth leagues to put those, to obtain the AEDs and have them available for their their students and for their adults that are present at those games. Um but we certainly recognize that we have, you know, again, this campus is the hub of much of the activity in this district. We recognize that we have a lot that goes on here and want to support our youth organizations. We also recognize that we have some spots in the district where we did not necessarily have AEDs that were regu- uh readily available, excuse me. So within the buildings, there's lots of AEDs, there's AEDs in each one of our foyers, we have AEDs at our nurses stations, we have AEDs that are located near the uh the gymnasiums. Our athletic trainer has a portable AED. Uh but there are a couple of spots, as I mentioned before, that that uh, you know, if there were a need for an AED, they're not close by. And I'm really talking about our outdoor athletic facilities. So we have been working over the course of the past several months to obtain AEDs and to also obtain outdoor weatherproof um boxes that are designed to store those AEDs. Uh and we've got a couple of locations where we're working on having those installed, again in areas that they would not have necessarily been readily available in the past. So we're looking at installing uh one near the girls softball field and another one down by the lacrosse field. Um and again, those those uh AEDs will be stored in outdoor weatherproof boxes. The weatherproof boxes will also have networks, network and power run to them to make sure that the batteries remain charged. Um and uh the wiring to them will also allow for some security features so that, you know, that will make sure that people are not tampering with those. So that that is in progress, we're working to have those implemented hopefully by uh within the next couple of months. Um so hopefully you'll see those soon. And those of you that have children that may be involved in youth sports, maybe you are aware of this regulation already. If not, this may be something that you hear more about over the course of spring, but I wanted to let everybody know that we are uh working to put those in place.
Any questions or comments, Tab?
Um, so, is there some kind of security feature that like the coaches, like how does that work?
So there's different ways you can manage it, um we did look initially at uh AED boxes that were locked boxes where essentially um you had to call nine-one-one and put and nine-one-one would give you a code. Uh and working with Orange County, they weren't really comfortable with that because there's some liability issues that the person can't access the AED. So as I said, the AED boxes themselves, there are going to be some security features. We're also going to make sure that those are in locations where they can be well surveilled, uh to make sure that they're not tampered with.
Can can they like contact nine-one-one if they're open?
That's, yeah, so the wiring to the boxes is designed to a lot of things, it's designed to provide heating and cooling to the devices. It's designed to make sure the batteries stay charged, there's security features involved, and also when the box is open, it it does signal an alarm.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this side, Mr. Monaco?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Renato, um I guess, I don't I don't know how to explain this question, but uh since they're outside in the general public, um I mean, I guess, is there any rules, laws, or whatever, who can use those things? I guess if that makes sense?
Yeah, it does, and we've and we've gone back and forth quite a bit. Uh Mr. Bolt has done a tremendous amount of research, working with other districts that have already put these in place. And and fr- and frankly, look, there, we have concern, my initial thought was that we should put them in locked boxes.
That was that, like Catherine said, yes.
Yeah, um and and really what we found was that there is, there is some liability issues that come along with that. Um I have to say to you that um as we see all the time and as we comment on all the time, this community and our students in particular, they're fantastic. Very little vandalism that occurs around here. We're very proud of that. And so there is a, there is a bit of um a a community um need for people to recognize that these are devices that are there to save somebody's life and that it's important for people not to touch them or mess with them until they're.
Trained professionally, I I believe I, with AEDs when I, in my coaching tenure, uh that was just coming out and I, that was part of the coaching stuff. Um but yeah, that's kind of, so that that'll be open basically to anybody in the public that could possibly use those or feels comfortable using those, I guess, with uh or trained.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Alright, that was it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Chris. Next item on the agenda is pupil personnel services with Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Good evening, please refer to the executive summary on board docs. The Committee on Preschool Special Education met on five days in March. Twenty-three students were reviewed, ask for a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements by the Committee on Preschool Special Education as presented.
So moved Scott Hines.
Second Kathy DeRose.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
The Committee on Special Education met on six days in March and nine days in April, sixty students were reviewed. I ask for a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements by the Committee on Special Education as presented.
So moved Anthony Monaco.
Second Vanessa White.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Fenton. Next item on the agenda is the Business Board, we need Mr. Witherer.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty, first item we have is approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six Property Tax Report Card, be resolved that the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools approves the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Property Tax Report Card.
So moved Ruth Lewis.
Second Vanessa White.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
Next item is March twenty-twenty-five Treasurer's Report, be resolved that the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's reports for the month of March twenty-twenty-five.
So moved Patty Reynolds.
Second Ruth Lewis.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
Next item is approval of warrants, be resolved that the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent accepts the claims auditors' report for the following warrants as attached.
So moved Bill Cooper.
Second Anthony Monaco.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
Next item is the quarterly extra classroom activity report, be resolved that the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent accepts and files the extra classroom activity quarterly report for the period ending March twenty-twenty-five.
So moved Ruth Lewis.
Second Patty Reynolds.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Next item on the agenda is Report Section, uh the first item, the Oxford Report. Um I did not attend the meeting, so there is no report for that. Um but I would like to turn this over to Mr. Fenton about the UBL, you want to speak about that?
Unified Sports League?
Yeah, sure, so we attended the uh, well, they had their second game today, the first one was at North Rockland. The the first home game was today, it was the 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 season opener here. Um we unfortunately lost thirty-six to thirty-five with a close layup right at the end, but it was an awesome, awesome um event. Uh the baseball team came out and did a little halftime show for us of musical chairs, I guess you could call it. Um but uh it was really exciting to see our guys and and girls out there and um it was just a a great opportunity for us, and we have another game next Tuesday at four o'clock, so if you have an opportunity to come out and see them, that would be great.
Thank you, Tab.
You got it.
That's in the nice school.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is District Events, Comment Period, anybody want to re- um report on district events they've attended?
Um yesterday, Mr. uh Monaco, along with Mr. uh uh Monahan, uh we attended the uh D-one, D-two uh NIL signings, and we had uh four students who are going to uh three, I believe, it was three to uh D-one schools for competition and uh one to a D-two school, and uh Mr. Bolt was pointing out how that, you know, that they represent less than two percent of the entire United States school athletes that get selected or have the opportunity um to sign NIL to these type of schools. So that they really like are a a credit to what our our teams are doing. And uh, you know, we we have students also who have been recently recognized um for for our our choral competitions and and other things like that, and it's it's really amazing what our programs here, our extracurriculars, not just athletics, but um all up and down the line, what these are doing for kids in our district.
Um yeah, so a- again, uh I let Mr. uh Mr. Cooper handle that, it it is absolutely amazing uh with our athletes and that all of the extracurricular activities we offer here at Minnesick Valley and to see our kids really excel and, you know, we're really shaping them for the, you know, next generation. Um so just a shout out to them guys as well, I'm glad to hear the Unified Sports, uh the basketball went well, I was gonna try to make that today, but life is extremely busy at times, but I'm glad and I'm gonna try to make it on Tuesday. Um also on uh on Monday, I was at Otisville for a meeting for my son and uh Ms. Downey caught me on the way out and uh asked me if I wanted to see what was going on in the kindergarten wing with our, you know, our uh our heating leak and it was, uh she brought me down there, it was actually great to see, I mean, the the response that we got from our staff on Sunday, Easter Sunday, was absolutely amazing. They got out there and and we were able to open uh with, you know, a bunch of moving around, but everybody came together and and uh and got done and it seemed to be going very smoothly, I know they got some little bit of transition there to move around to get one side of the building and the other, but uh and then the complete updates, uh Mr. Monahan, you've been sending us of the stuff that's going on there, and again, the response, and uh they were able to really isolate that situation in that area. Hopefully, uh like I said, in the next, whatever, five or six days, um they should be back using those classrooms again. But a shout out to all our staff that came in on Sunday, um you know, on on their holiday as well, uh you know, to come in and get everything. And then all the teachers and everybody that came in early Monday to get jockeyed around and and the building administration there on Sunday as well to observe what's going on and, you know, and and stuff like that. So shout out to to everybody there and getting that place and making sure our building could open on uh on Monday. I can tell you, our our younger students were very excited to be up on the second floor. The kindergartners up in the fifth wing wing? Yeah, they were, they were quite excited, so pointing out how they could look out and see the valley and.
Anyone else? I want to ask the Board of Education, um oh, before I do that, Mr. Monahan, no other business for the Board?
No other business for the Board.
Alright, I'm gonna ask the Board for motion to enter into executive session to discuss employment histories of particular persons and matters made exempt under federal law, FERPA, the Board may take action after executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. Thank you all for coming, have a good evening, get home safely, please.